We've got a really rowdy crowd here tonight, apparently.
Do you know how to whistle?
Guys, we'd like to start the meeting.
Principal Sullivan, come to order.
Oh, Bruce. Thank you. Thank you very much. It was my recommendation. I do some teaching, so it felt natural. I don't bring the gavel up.
Just raise our hands and do this.
Thank you very much for being here. We will get the meeting started. The mayor will not be in attendance tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting. I'd like to open the school committee business meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2019. If we could get a roll call, that would be great.
Mr. Decanter?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mayor Holliday's absent. Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
Mr. Riden?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Terrific. Thank you. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our period of public comment. If there's anybody who has joined us tonight who has any comments they would like to make to the school committee about anything that's on their mind, if they can do it within a couple of minutes, please come up, sign in, so that we have your address for the minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have warrants.
Yes, we have four warrants tonight. I'm going to read those in ascending order. The first warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $4,912.20 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. One absent.
I move that the following named bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $18,939.49 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. One absent.
The next warrant, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $94,839.70 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. One absent.
And the last warrant, I moved that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $352,785.66 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? One absent? Thank you very much. We do not have minutes for this meeting. We will be reviewing the minutes at our next meeting for our previous meeting. And at this point, I would like to turn this over to the superintendent. We will be introducing the principals. In return, we'll be introducing staff and faculty. And we'll then follow that up with some student recognitions. After the student recognitions, we will take a break for five minutes. And school committee members are certainly encouraged to mingle with the audience and congratulate some of these kids on the wonderful work they're doing, the teachers. Thank you, Sean.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I just wanted to thank our administration for all their hard work over the summer. And we wanted to introduce some of our new staff that could attend here tonight. So at this time, I'd like to call up Christina Davis and Amy Sullivan to announce some of their new staff members. Yes. Oh, and Ann Dobell. Come on up. Ann will be doing the student presentations in a little bit.
Hi.
Hey, how are you doing?
So, we are honored to introduce our new occupational therapist who joined us at the beginning of the school year, Vanessa Norton. Would you like to wave and say hello?
We had a number of new staff, and we're not entirely sure how many people are here tonight. But maybe we should just... Is there any... We would love to tell you the names of the others.
Yes, that would be great.
And if they're here and we miss them in the crowd, please like to stand. But we have a brand-new school social worker. Her name is Holly Curtis. And she is doing an amazing job. She's going to be a great outreach for families.
We also have Megan Maloney. And she is our new BCBA. She'll be working with our classroom teachers and our special education team supporting students' classrooms and families.
We are really thrilled to bring on Stephanie Pesalona. Some of you may know her as a mother of three in the district. She started off working with us in an instructional assistant capacity. She took over a long-term maternity leave. And now we are so pleased to have her as our new IDC teacher in our special education program. She's doing an amazing job.
We also have Ashley Brzezinski. She joined us last year as a student fellow from Endicott College. And she landed a special education position this year just before the start of the school year.
Well, we had a few shifts, which I think were important, too. So our enrollment is increasing. And we had Caitlin Nickerson, who was a special education teacher for two years at the Breznerhand School, step into her dream job of a first-grade classroom teacher. So we are thrilled to have her in her new role. And our former BCBA, Lisa Mascara, who has worked many years in the district, has transitioned into a special education teacher position. So we're really happy that people are able to try out some new roles. And we can tap into a lot of their different talents.
And for the teachers that are here tonight, I do see a couple of them. Could you stand up and be recognized?
Steve Prestolino.
Steve. All right. And we want to take... Since we have Breznerhand up here, part of our opening day ceremony in welcoming the teachers back, last year we had some student involvement where the high school students came out and rooted our teachers on. This year, I think we took it to a whole new level. And we had all different grades represented. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Wolf, his administrative team. We had probably, I don't know, 150 high school students involved. It was a large group. They did a lot of the cheering as the faculty was coming in. It was awesome. But then we also incorporated the Breznerhand step dancers, which when the faculty came into the auditorium, this group did an amazing job displaying their talents in step dancing. And Bruce, you were there. It was...
They were stepping.
They were stepping. Truly, truly impressive.
Wonderful job.
So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ann Dobell to recognize those students and the families that are here tonight.
So the Breznerhand School is so excited and very proud of our dancers and would like to welcome them to come up. Can we have Hannah Wheatman come up?
She'll stay right there.
You want to stay right there? Yeah. We have Scout Moyer, another dancer. We have Maeve Marino. And can we have Fiona Mahan?
Steve's our official gentleman. We'll take some pictures. And parents, feel free to take pictures if you want to. That'd be great. Thanks so much. I don't want to step on your toes because I don't want you to not be able to step anymore.
Do you have stance? Do you have stance?
We'll make you official. Bruce, did you want to get in here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, this is the official one.
Give me your best St. Patrick's Day smile.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'd like to call up Principal Furlong, NOK principal, Mullen. They're only... We introduced Ms. Sokolowski at our last school meeting as the only new addition as a assistant principal. So at this time, I'll have Principal Furlong introduce some of the new staff that you hired. And some of them will be out here.
Okay, awesome. Let's see, we have, I think, three new staff here tonight to introduce. I'll start with first, Ms. Sue Guido. Mrs. Sue Guido. Actually, a Newburyport Clipper mom. And also been in the district for quite a while, but taking on a new position as a teacher in our Bright program. So welcome, Sue. And we also have in our seventh grade for our language-based class, a special educator. Comes to us with tremendous experience working for both Desi and other districts in the state as a consultant, as a reasoning specialist. Welcome Cynthia Curtis. And lastly, in the audience, a new eighth-grade English Language Arts teacher who we were really pleased to find that he was a real person because we did this crazy online Skype interview with him while he was in the Marshall Islands doing some educational work there, Eric Shulga. We have a couple other new staff who weren't able to be with us this evening. We have Kathy Shepherd, who has been working in the NOK and Mullen giving lessons. She joins us as also a member of the Boston Philharmonic to run our course and orchestra programs at the NOK. And then Kevin Stack, who is an English Language learner teacher who is joining us sort of across Breznerhand, NOK, and Mullen, servicing a lot of different students.
All right. And as part of our welcome back, we had some NOK students who performed unbelievably. Once again, they're my go-tos throughout the district when we need a little music and a little pep in our step. So at this time, I'll have Principal Furlong introduce the students that performed while the teachers receive some breakfast in the morning.
We had two bands sort of having a gig on the first day. Then one... First one is two young men who actually... They provided entertainment for us as kind of an opportunity to take a moment, to be mindful, and to transition at the end of the day before a lot of our faculty meetings throughout the course of the year. And it was such a really beautiful way to end a school day and try to get yourself, your head set around another 90 minutes of schoolwork. And really have just brought music to the middle school in a lot of different, really beautiful ways. So let me start first with Cedar Schumacher and Theo Ralston.
And I would... Well, I don't... I just want to introduce the next group, and then you can... Yeah, go for it. This next group performed while... Before the Irish Step Dancers. We actually did talk about curriculum instruction assessment this day, too. It wasn't all student performances, but it was awesome. This group is a sixth-grade girl group who... They write their own songs. And they performed for the faculty right in the beginning. And it was just awesome. I just wanted to say that, too.
You left me their name to say. The Harmonellities.
Yes.
Harmonellities? You're the right ladies. Listen, I inherited them on their first day of school. Look who I got. Awesome, young, sixth-grade women. Seattle Claire. Chloe Raby. And Ava Scecky. The Harmonellities have a fourth member, Lily DeGeordi, who couldn't be with us this evening. So Cynthia, Eric, Sue.
That will take a team photo. Come on up. All right, can we... Hold it this way.
Man, so much paparazzi. It's all about Sean.
Who are we here with looking this way?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. Thank you. And then we just have Mr. Wolf.
Oh, yeah, great.
Yep, high school. And last recognition for teachers, I'm going to call up Principal Wolf for some of the high school teachers that have joined our staff.
So I'm excited to introduce three new staff teachers to the high school this year that I think is going to... They're going to help us grow and move forward. So our first teacher that we brought on is Peter Brannon. He works in our science department, has several years of teaching experience. And he's really kind of just jumped right in with a lot of the work they've been doing during common planning time already. So a strong addition there. And then another strong addition is Shannon Johnson. And she is working and managing our IDC program and really trying to further develop the curriculum that's happening there. And then...
Can you do the echo and force?
What's that?
What is IDC?
Help me out, Shannon.
Sorry, didn't mean to bust you like that.
Thank you. And then our third...
As long as Mrs. Kennedy got it, we're okay.
And our third new staff member is... We were able to add an adjustment counselor through the budget process last school year. And we have Jen Conti, who was not able to join us here tonight. But she has come on and is managing our Bright programs, or therapeutic program in the school.
And once again, we want to thank the high school staff... I mean, the students for opening day. You had a band playing outside, and all those students...
Yeah, they brought some energy to the start.
Yeah, awesome. All right, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
We have a... We're reconvened. We just have a little bit of business to take care of before we get the presentation that we're going to get on world language. And that is, we need to vote on to approve the AFSMI and the IA contract. The school committee has seen the contracts. And I need a motion to approve. Some moved?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. One absent. They are...
Does that need to be a roll call vote?
Why don't we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Decanter?
Yes.
Mr. Riden?
Yes.
And Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Which of you are going to be introducing the professor? Terrific.
All right. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Nicole Scherf. She is a professor and secondary education coordinator in the Department of World Languages and Cultures at Salem State University. She has 30 years of experience in teaching Spanish and in program coordination, first in K-12 and now to undergraduate and graduate students of Spanish and Spanish teachers in training. She is a longtime board member of the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association, where she has served in a number of capacities, including conference chair, president, and advocacy coordinator. She is also on the steering committee of the Language Opportunity Coalition, co-leading the SEAL of Bili literacy work group and pilot. She writes articles at the state and national level and presents sessions, workshops, and professional development on a variety of topics related to foreign language teaching, assessment, and program at the district, state, regional, and national level. She has an undergraduate degree from Boston College and two master's degrees and a doctorate in modern languages from Middlebury College. We're really, really pleased to have Dr. Scherf with us tonight.
Well, I'm so thrilled to be here. Can you all hear me? Yes? Teacher voice projects. And how exciting to follow all the celebration in the district. So I'm just thrilled to be here to talk about the work that I've been doing in the district. With great thanks to the amazingly supportive and encouraging administration and the collaborative and growing World Languages Department in Newburyport. We've... I'm here to talk to you a little bit about background as well as the work that we've completed over the past spring semester. So I've organized my objectives for this mini-presentation in can-do statements as we organize our world language teaching. By the end of this presentation, I hope that you will be able to say that I can describe the importance of language learning. You saw my bumper sticker on the front page. I can explain the proficiency movement and the SEAL of Bili literacy. And I can outline the steps taken by and the next steps for the Newburyport World Language Department. So just a little overview of the history of world language teaching, a very short overview. I've been involved in language teaching and programming for 30 years. And it's been an interesting 30 years. I think every language teacher would agree that oftentimes, when we say, "I'm a language teacher," the person responding says, "Oh, I took whatever language for whatever number of years, and I can't say a word." And I think the state of programming, the resources available are changing all of that. We're starting to see the incredible need for a biliiterate citizenry. 30 years ago, we were saying, "Oh, languages are really nice if you want to travel." 15 years ago, politicians even... I'm a proud language advocate. Politicians even would start to say, "Yes." And businessmen would say, "Yes, it's important to know another language for international affairs and relations and commerce." These days, bili literacy is a national need. And I think it is more and more accepted every day. In 2017, the Boston Globe reported on a report by the New American Economy that crunched the online job postings for Massachusetts for all areas of business between 2010 and 2015. And in that timeframe, noticed that the need for a bili... A biliiterate or a foreign language requirement in the job had almost tripled, which is pretty amazing in a five-year period. And four years later, I can only imagine how much more it's increased. Just two weeks ago, I received my language educator from the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. And they reported on a huge survey they did of 1,200 managers and human resources professionals of national businesses of all areas. And they're reporting that there's more and more need for biliiterate citizens to be working in the United States. I was pleased to see the languages in Newburyport represented in the top five as a serious need. And although, as a language advocate, I strongly say that language study and enjoyment of language study makes more language study happen. Students get excited by language studying. It facilitates further language study. Long sequences is what's needed. And when we start to get to the languages that have a different writing or a different character, it becomes harder to attain the same levels of proficiency. So those are some considerations in language choice. The future demand is very promising for all areas of business. I think in a very near future, we're going to be seeing this critical need met by the transformations that are happening in world language programs across the country. So let me start with a little bit of background. I started my career 30 years ago. And interestingly enough, this document was published and presented in my very first methods class in... I'm sorry, 1986. 1986, 30 years ago. It was seen as a really promising, exciting document that was going to transform language education. It's a document that describes, in terms of speaking, reading, listening, and writing, what learners can do in the various levels of learning from novice through to superior and distinguished. The Inverted Pyramid is... Was intended to be a guiding force for districts as they plan for instruction. But... And as they plan for what needs the careers they might be hoping for would have in terms of proficiency level. So ACTVOL has just published this Oral Proficiency Levels in the Workplace designating necessary levels of proficiency based on the ACTVOL proficiency guidelines. But the proficiency guidelines in '86 were not the revolution that they were intended to be because at the time, there was no cost-effective, easy way to assess a learner's proficiency in speaking, reading, writing, and listening. And it was only in the early 2000s that work began to create a test. And by 2007, there were two solid companies that were offering this test at a pretty manageable amount, $20 a student through the computer. For a couple of hours, you could get the student's proficiency level according... For a couple of hours, you could get the student's proficiency level according to the ACTFOL proficiency guidelines. The two companies are Avant Assessment and the one associated with ACTFOL is Language Teaching International. And I, in the handout, gave you links to demo tests so you can see what they're like. Everything that I've heard in feedback from students who are involved in these tests is that they're fun tests to take, that they really bring the purpose of language study alive because they relate to performance tasks and authentic resources and authentic use of the language. So 2007, these tests started to appear. In 2010, a group organized in California called Californians Together that wanted to champion the success of English learners. They passed legislation in California to offer a SEAL of Bilinguality to students who attained a functional level of bilinguality by college graduation. This spurned a humongous movement across the United States. From 2010 to 2019, 36 states and DC have either passed legislation or enacted some kind of formal process at the Department of Ed to reward students for the bilinguality that they attained in K through 12. And they really moved from the English learner vision and focus of California to celebrate all language learning populations. And the professional organizations for dual language programs, for English language teachers, and for world language teachers have been cooperating, much like has happened in Massachusetts, to pass legislation to celebrate language learning in general. So Massachusetts, for some reason, took five long years, three legislative sessions to get the SEAL of Bilinguality passed. I think it took so long because it was part of a comprehensive bill called the Language Opportunity for Our Kids Act, which was intended to reverse the 2002 English-only law that had been passed, that had gotten rid of a lot of the bilingual programming and made English instruction for English learners be the only way to orient the students. The collaboration then in getting this bill passed, the advocates were world language, dual language, and English language learners and were thrilled on November 22nd, 2017, when Governor Baker signed the bill into law. The language advocates had created a pilot for the SEAL of Bilinguality the three years prior to the passing of the legislation and were hired as vendors to write the guidance document for the Department of Ed. It's really exciting to see how districts have jumped on to the SEAL of Bilinguality movement in Massachusetts as a way to revolutionize mostly world language instruction because I think English learning instruction and dual language instruction is pretty well-understood. But world language instruction is being transformed to create people who can perform, learners who can perform in the language. And through the tens of thousands of tests that have been taken through Avant Assessment and Language Testing International, they've documented that it takes about 150 hours or one level of instruction to jump each sub-level, although as we move up the inverted pyramid, it takes longer for each next level. The state SEAL of Bilinguality was selected by the Department of Ed to be this very high level of proficiency, of intermediate high, and the state SEAL of Bilinguality with distinction is set for advanced low. Fully attainable in a well-articulated program, but really gives the sense that language learning takes time and that it's best accomplished when it's begun early and continued in a program that collaborates and works together to make sure that proficiency is happening. The Language Opportunity Coalition has stayed on as advisors to new districts coming in and kept an award at the intermediate level, which the nation calls the first functional level of ability. Last spring, the Department of Ed awarded almost 1,200 SEALs of Bilinguality and about 500 LOC awards were given. Take a look at this beautiful map that the Department of Ed created. The SEAL of Bilinguality is a movement. It has spread to the corners of Massachusetts and now in 82 districts, where we're certainly hoping that Newburyport is right around the corner to joining this movement in celebrating bilinguality. The amazing statewide results of the SEAL of Bilinguality and Look Act are that world language, dual language, and English learning programs in districts are collaborating to celebrate and produce bilinguality. In the Department of Ed, a world language coordinator position was filled for the first time since the 1990s. Andy McDonough joined the Office of Language Acquisition. The OLEA office has been changed to the OLA office, and he joined in May of 2019. And our 1999 world language framework finally are slated for a revision with the SEAL of Bilinguality and proficiency development front and center as a goal. So exciting to see the statewide discussion about proficiency development. And it's easy to join the movement, and that really brings us to what I've been doing with the World Language Department in Newburyport. The needs for a departmental growth of proficiency over the time of programming begin with collaboration, coordination, and alignment of expectations. World language teachers need to work together to create experiences that are going to grow proficiency. They need to align expectations in terms of classroom procedures, teaching, and assessment so that performances will be assessed and the performances practiced over time will build proficiency. In the spring, we started work on setting proficiency targets for the years of programming and setting communicative learning objectives for the units being taught in grade six through 12. And in the work ahead, we're going to be working further on determining the evidence in terms of performances and getting students involved in performances, in class activities, and in the assessments so that we have a curriculum that's designed around thematic units as opposed to a textbook table of contents. Newburyport, world language is a collaborative and engaged department that has bought into proficiency and is excited about the collaboration. And we've taken on a mantra of baby steps because the idea of the shift to proficiency is quite a big shift that involves just about everything that is done in the classroom. So the teachers are fully on board and fully on what nationally is called the path to proficiency. Over the spring, I completed several needs assessments with observations of the teacher and guided PDs. We are working on the ACTFOL core practices that support teachers in practicing the performance that are going to lead to proficiency. And the key components include the use of the target language, immersing students in the language instead of, for example, trying to learn how to swim outside the swimming pool. We're learning the language while speaking the language and interacting in the language. Using authentic cultural resources, using communicative activities, planning with backward design, engaging our students to participate actively in the process with feedback that's going to help them in their path to proficiency and making the focus of instruction be the performances and not the vocabulary and the grammar that it traditionally was. The amazing results of our work together in one spring is that, and I think this really is because of the support of administration and understanding of the administration of the needs for this incredible shift, is that a department leadership position was created to oversee middle and high school collaboration and work. And I'm really excited to work closely with Alden Metz this year as the work continues. A mission statement and a five-year goal statement were created by the world language teachers through collaboration and giving and taking. It was a really interesting process. Thrilled about the parity of programming between German and Spanish, with very strong interest in German in both the middle school and in the high school level. And finally, I think it's a testament to how on board the World Language Department is in this process that they all signed up to participate in summer curriculum writing and further PD over the summer. That's my presentation. I'd love to see from you all and the audience a thumbs up, thumbs mid, thumbs down for how you feel you can address these can-do statements. I can describe the importance of language learning? Thumbs up? Thumbs up? I can explain the proficiency movement and the SEAL of Bilinguality? Okay? And finally, I can outline the steps taken by and the next steps for the Newburyport World Language Department. Wonderful. Well, I'm again thrilled to be a part of this. It's been very, very interesting work for me, and I'd love to address any questions that you have or clarifications that you might like to ask.
Questions from the school committee?
When you say parity of German programming with Spanish, does that mean we're intending on trying to add more? I know we started a part-time German teacher for the eighth graders. So is our plan to add more language teachers at the middle school?
That's our plan. My answer would be, I'd love to see it down in the kindergarten, but I know I'm the person to say that when language learning is most easily learned.
Is there parity in the choices at the high school? Like, do we know the percentage of students asking to take Spanish versus German at the high school?
We do. I don't have it off the top of my head, but we do have those percentages. Alden, do you have any idea about the percentages?
Because most recently, Spanish has been the, has been the only offering at the middle school, then most of those students have gone on to continue their language learning in Spanish, but there's been a cohort that has decided to change to German.
Now, let me clarify. When I say parity, I don't mean parity in exact numbers and courses offered. I mean parity in course design, in expectations of outcomes, and classroom practices. Spanish is and will probably always be the most taught language in the United States and in Massachusetts.
I have a question. Sort of, what, in terms of proficiency, if I were to walk into a classroom that was teaching proficiency, what would I be seeing?
So proficiency describes what can be done by the learner in terms of the context that they can deal with, the tasks that they can complete within those contexts, and the amount of language that comes out and to what degree of precision. The first functional level of language proficiency is intermediate/mid, and that's called the survival level. So what we're looking to do is to get out of novice as quickly as we can and get into a functional level of language proficiency where we're able to interact in survival kind of situations, where we're able to ask questions, where we're able to give descriptions, where we're able to explain things, but in a very concrete kind of way. As we move further up to intermediate high, we're looking at narrating in the past and future. So it's what you should see and hear in observing in a classroom that's oriented to proficiency is a lot of interaction in the target language. In classes that are novice-level classes, they need the supports. They need sentence starters and question answers that will help them to create the interactions and practice the performances that will lead them to being more independent in creating with the language. Ultimately, our goal is to have those people that came up to me and said, "I took whatever number of years of whatever language, I can't say a word," say, "I not only can say a word, but I can explain, I can narrate, I use language. I find opportunities to use language in my daily life because that's the kind of experience I had in my K through 12."
Other questions?
So when you did your needs assessments, are you using like an ACTFOL or a MAFL rubric as you go through?
I really based a lot of my needs assessment on our goals, which was the core practices. I used teacher surveys based on their comfort of the certain components that we were working with and also what I was observing in the classrooms.
So I guess from those observations, because I know this shift, like it has in many of our subjects, has happened over the last couple of years, like, did you see a lot of the teachers already kind of gravitating towards that shift or did you see?
The world language teachers have bought in, and they're very excited about it. It's a big move. It's a big move. And I've been teaching methods at Salem State now for 18 years, and in my methods class, like with the world language department here, I started with use of the target language in the classroom. The historic way to teach language is to talk about the language instead of to have interactions in the language. And the first step is getting the teacher used to a 90% plus use of the language in the classroom. The next tough phase is to get the students responding. So the teachers have already started posting helpful posters about how to ask questions and how to ask for clarification. The most difficult step of this first phase to the shift is when you're assigning a communicative activity and you're over here with this group of students, is that group of students speaking in the target language? And the way to ensure that happens is to engage them with authentic resources and to design communicative activities that are purposeful, that have some kind of solution to solve. Language learning has often, or as research shows, that it's connected with supporting math because language, when done right, should be a problem to solve. Making that communication happen is the problem to solve. So people who get the understanding of what communication is, it does translate into supporting math. Interesting.
It's nice because, I mean, we're doing the skills-based training with all the other teams. This is exactly the same thing that we're doing at World Languages, so I think that's great.
Any other questions? Yeah, I do. I haven't been here a long time and seen the complete deconstruction of a program that started in kindergarten. We have spent a lot of years talking about how to put that back. My question is, is it possible to improve the current level of proficiency in the world My question is, at some points, we've tried to flip classrooms. We've tried to use technology. What do you see the role of technology or ability to use technology in supporting this? Do you see any role of it?
Honestly, I have talked about the articulation that's needed from the beginning of program to the end. In my view, the most important use of technology is to use the Internet to find the resources that are going to be a springboard for the communicative interactions. Nothing can replace a teacher in creating those communicative experiences. I spent the beginning of the professional development work really focusing on that with the World Language teachers, that it's difficult to be in a department that didn't have leadership and that had been so cut and so not part of the core curriculum. So I think, I don't know, the same reason why I wouldn't like to do an online class, I really think communication needs interaction and support and that articulation all the way through is absolutely essential.
Bruce, could we give Alden just a couple of minutes to talk about what it's been like to be a teacher participating in this? And then this year, she's looking forward to working closely with Nicole and with the rest of the World Language team as a teacher leader. And I just think she had some, we met earlier today and she had some really nice insights that I wanted you to hear.
Terrific.
Well, I was, when you spoke, Mr. Menon, I was reminded that there are many of us here in the room. Not many, but several of us here in the room who have been here and have, you know, have lived the dream and suffered the, you know, the consequences of a lack of funding. You know, and that was reality, but this is too. So I just, I guess what I want to say is it has been just incredibly emboldening to work with Nicole. And we've had a really wonderful couple of months building the program and I look forward to continuing to do so throughout the year and with, you know, with our team at the high school and middle school. You know, Nicole has spoken to the fact that it's, you know, it's not an easy process. But it's, you know, change is the only constant. So I see it as this change is hard, but as Nicole said, we're looking at baby steps, you know. And if you're going to make any change, you know, you need to also feel the pull of excitement on what the possibilities are. And I just want to say that that is very exciting to me and I'm looking, you know, looking to that focus of growth and feel extremely appreciative of everyone who has supported the program from, you know, my entire tenure at Newburyport, but particularly now because I feel like this growth mindset that, you know, we are encouraged to have for our students is definitely being reflected back and that as teachers, we are given the opportunity to grow as well. And that's what we, that's what we're trying to do as teachers for our students. We need to do it for ourselves as well. So I'm really looking forward to it and it's just been a joy. And, you know, as long as we can stick together and continue to lead one on one another in collaborative leadership model that Mr. Wolf is certainly engendering in all of us and hopefully just keep marching forward. So thank you.
Are there sort of benchmarks that we will reach that would be sort of the point at which we can say, "Okay, now we're going to reach down to fifth grade. Now we're going to reach down to fourth grade." How does this, how does this program know what it would look like in the long?
I'm not sure there are benchmarks that you reach, but as we move forward, I'd love to see some sample testing of students with the, either the stamp test or the Apple test, which relatively inexpensively can obtain data that is understood at a national level about what students who either are points of the program or who complete the program are able to do. I think it's a first time for World Language. We sometimes talk about AP data, but that really focuses in on the top of the top. I love the idea of having the ability to really track growth. So I would say that that's an area where the World Language Department and through the administration will be discussing, hopefully implementing it at some point. I think the department is coming together very nicely and has made a lot of progress over the last spring. I see further growth. We were just planning today for Alden's next department meetings and our ongoing professional development. I think that it's as fast as the World Language Department, the administration, and the school committee is willing to move on it. We've got a lot of really beautiful models. In the three years of the pilot, I just watched districts being transformed by the data that was describing what their students were able to do with the language. The first year of the pilot, eight districts participated. And by the third year of the pilot, they were not only testing their program completers, but they had moved testing to eighth grade to be a better placement model and to be a midpoint in program to see the progress. I think it's the information that can be gleaned about the needs of the district and the successes of the district from this external testing is just so thrilling, so thrilling to me.
And just to respond to that, we've been, we've met with Nicole over the summer talking about the progression of working towards seal of biliteracy in Newburyport. So we'll be applying for that. It's a simple application with the state and then you need to start the testing process. So for us, it's exciting from both angles, from thinking about it for our World Language students, but also thinking about it for our English learners as well and really trying to make that available to both sets of learners.
For expanding, I'm not putting Lisa on the front burner here, but we're going to need to look at the schedule at the middle school to be able to expand what we're doing with World Language at some point down the road to make it a core, right?
Yeah, that's true.
So I'm assuming those conversations are at least buzzing?
Yes, absolutely. And from the beginning, starting working with Nicole, we just kind of laid out where we've been, where we would love to go as a community with World Language and how do we grow it, where do we start to grow it? Do you begin at the middle school, do you begin at lower grades? And all of those conversations, I think, are taking place in the way that we're thinking also about resources of space and staffing. While at the same time trying to grow the level of proficiency teaching that happens in the classroom that we have already.
Love that you use the word core. We've always considered World Language a core subject, but sometimes it takes some pushing for that word. And really, although there's an element of special in the elementary level, World Language is right along side math, English, and science and history as a core subject.
And I think, I can't speak for the school committee, but I certainly hope that it gets restored to that level. Nick?
I'm just reminded of one thing that we've been preaching for all these many years. And as we move down the road on this, one of the things that I'd like to remind ourselves about is how important it is for us to get instruction into the lower grades as early as possible. That's when students are most able to learn. That's when we can have more impact on them truly becoming bilingual over time. And so anything we can do to bring that back, we really need to keep fighting for that.
Do people flip language programs? And by that, I mean, if we all know that language is more easily acquired early in the grade, shouldn't we just get rid of the teachers, the seniors, who teach seniors in high school and move them into the elementary grade and take the AP course at the end of freshman year?
If you look at the inverted pyramid, let me see, oh, I passed, I passed it. If you look at the inverted pyramid, language learning takes time. And it really is best started early on in kindergarten when students are learning about the calendar and colors and numbers. It supports that learning. And it's kind of embarrassing for students to be learning the alphabet in ninth grade or in seventh grade, wherever they start. But language learning to a functional level of proficiency takes time. You won't attain it to a functional level if you stop and leave it. So I think it needs to be a K through, well, we call it K through 20 to life proposition.
I get that part. But instead of waiting a lifetime to get elementary language back, I guess my only question, has anybody thought to just push it to the upper grades and take it out of the high school when kids are distracted and up to a million and one things?
Never heard of that. It's a core subject. How can you take a core subject out of the high school? And if you want students to get to the advanced level, that'll never happen in just a K through six sequence.
Well, no, you just, I'm just thinking like, second grade through ninth or 10th. You know, just balance it out a little bit. So just asking.
If it's a course, just like math, would we ever think that enough math can be gained to function in life in just second through ninth grade?
I wasn't suggesting that it's the end-all, be-all. But it's a stopgap. Right now, we don't have everything we want now.
Right.
So if we have to make choices, which we do, I'm just asking if you know of anybody who has made a choice to go with the pretty well-accepted, and I'm assuming at some level researched, idea that kids learn languages better when they're younger.
Right. I have never heard that. I have never heard of that. And I would say that after the cutbacks that the World Language Department has already undergone, it would be very demoralizing for the program.
I didn't want to cut the program. I wanted to shift the program. I'm asking if you, anybody?
I've never heard of that. Never heard of that. If the student wants to get college credit for language achieved and they haven't had language since ninth grade, they're not going to get college. They're not going to remember anything. It's going to go back to the years of, "I took it and I don't remember."
Any additional thoughts or comments or questions? Thank you very much. This has been very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
The next item on the agenda is Sean doing a first-grade presentation of the 2019-2020 district goals. Just taking a little bit of time to set up here.
I didn't want that to be a fight. It was a honest, simple question. I didn't want to argue about it. What's that?
She didn't answer the question.
Sure, fine. She didn't. She didn't answer.
Did you use your tablet?
All right. So in your packet, you receive the same information. I just put it to a PowerPoint for our viewing audience out there. So we're going to take a look. Some of the goals, the district goals, you'll see they're kind of similar. But I think working with the leadership team, we've really narrowed down our action steps and really added, I think, a lot to this. So the first piece, and as we developed our district goals this year, we tied it all back, number one, to the strategic plan. We also tied it back to similar goals from last year. And then also, in a couple of weeks, we'll be doing our district review, but we also tied in some of the district review growth areas in there too. You'll get that more specifics at a future school committee meeting. The first professional learning goal is instructional leadership. And really to increase the instructional leadership expertise, capacity within the district, support teachers in meeting the needs of all learners. I firmly believe that this is really the foundation to the biggest part of our strategic plan, which is reimagining teaching and learning. So I really believe the instruction piece is a key aspect to that because once we work with teachers and administrators as an entire district, then all of those other aspects will fall into place. You know, for technology, you know, for World Language, to the skills-based instruction, all of those types of things. So this is what we shared, and I shared our opening day PowerPoint with you. This was also shared with the faculty on those five instructional practices. So every lesson should have an aspect of these five instructional practices. Identifying the skill and outcome, frequent check for understanding, a variety of instructional practices, scaffolding that supports the learning, and then reinforce what was learned. And then you can see A, B, and C. A was very important to us. It's really taking these district goals and then allowing the principals, central office staff, teachers throughout the entire district to really adapt this to their site-specific, job-specific steps directly related to district review growth areas and then also kind of what we're doing as, you know, as a whole district. So we look at the key action steps. We continue to focus on the best instructional practices, align the extended leadership team. I don't want to read you all of these bullet points because we'll be here all night. But basically, you can see in every action step, it's really about those key instructional practices. It's also taking the great work we've been doing with Billy Donigan in the skill space, and then really utilizing some mentor texts. And this was recommended by Billy, develop and expert learners for our, not only the leadership team, but also some of the principals are utilizing this text for their teacher leaders also. Work with faculty, support staff to monitor, review, assessment results, and student work samples, review and discuss feedback provided for teachers, two-way communication, develop the methods to record and store the exemplars of best practice. And then the other piece is develop a professional culture where we provide opportunities for teachers to observe one another. So really, this, this is the, I think, the, the most important piece is you not only just doing the, the best practices, but being part of, you know, walking into classrooms in the observation and then feedback both ways. As you recall, last year, we developed district learning walks. So the extended leadership team was in all of the classrooms throughout the school year. And we actually, tomorrow morning, right Angela, is that the first one? So where we split the extended leadership team, we're going to be talking and about these practices. And then we're really working with the administration on how do you provide specific feedback on some of the practices that, that you've seen. So we're, I'm excited about that. The other piece for me as superintendent, I'm working with principals individually. So today, I spent two hours with Andy. We observed some classrooms, and then we came back and we're talking about, it's almost like coaching principals on how, how you provide the feedback, what did you see? And really getting everybody on the same page, not just the administration, but also the faculty, which is the key importance. And really having that two-way communication with that. I'm sorry about the delay here. Maybe it's this little plug this, trying to be a tech sad here. So then we did a professional learning goal, some of the benchmarks and progress, evidence of progress. And then you can see all of the, the different aspects here. The, the other piece that we've done this year is we're utilizing Teach Point, which is a evaluation program. We had some issues, you know, with the IO baseline, and so feedback from teachers and administration was, you know, we, when you are in the classroom or when we do get observations, it's not, it wasn't a, a process that was easy for the two-way communication. The Teach Point process is, and that's something that we're rolling out. And then you can just see the, the different types of benchmarks that we have regarding instructional practice. So we really believe that that's the core of everything we do. And we never want to lose sight that instructional practices, you know, are the key. They're constantly changing, and it's why we come to work every day, to really work with our students and our families. What I also did for everybody also is I tied in the strategic plan to all of those pieces. So if we go with the big picture and we have instructional practices that are common, that are common knowledge of the administration, the teachers, and these are being utilized throughout, then everything else falls into place. So it's not necessarily, oh, well, here's our action plans. How does this fit in? It's really, these are the action plan and steps and strategy from our strategic plan that really tie back to those instructional practices. So as part of our district goals, I also wanted to tie back in the instructional, instructional practices that tie back to the strategic plan that many people worked on over the years. And I think it's actually a, I really love our strategic plan. I think it takes big picture and these action steps break it down for us to, to get very specific. All right. Hold the leg. So that was our professional practice, a learning goal for the district. And once again, our student learning goal and support measures of academic improvement. So looking at a lot of data, it's not just we wanted to concentrate on subgroups. We also want to concentrate on all learners. And that's going to really tie to that college and career readiness piece and ties to the rigor, which was our district goal on the curriculum mapping. So it's really thinking and look at all students and to improve student achievement for all students while closing the existing achievement gaps to economically disadvantage students with learning disabilities. And once again, when you look at A, work with individual extended leadership team members to identify site-specific, job-specific steps directly related to the district review, but also directly related to their, to their roles within the district. Create a climate that provides equitable personalized learning. Work with the extended leadership team to develop a system measuring the outreach of effectiveness, especially for your tier one and tier two. Identify high-impact tier three practices and expand our outreach. Continue to have extended leadership team members relate to the best instructional practices and the power elements for the exclusive, exclusive practices that I have. A copy of that for you guys, I'll take a look at. Regarding the D cap. And I'm going to go into, really, that's your tier one interventions is our D cap, classroom accommodations, and how to implement those best practices. And then develop ongoing analysis and assessments and benchmarks on a regular basis for the standards and instruction. So these are key action steps. I'm going to read you all of them, but you can see, you see a common theme here. Teacher-friendly, student-friendly, relevant data tied to targets. Set measurable targets for each student population. Continue to enhance technology integration into the tier one, two, and three supports. Increase communication to parents in terms of assessments, interventions, instructional supports. Promote and celebrate student and faculty success. So we really tie this back into not only the assessments, but all of the recognition work that we did. That's going to continue, you know, throughout the district. So student learning goal and benchmarks. Taking a look, and I have a slide here that, that goes over tier one, two, and three, and what that kind of looks like. But really, look at the systems and processes in place, our growth over the course of the learning walks observed, utilizing those power elements that I have there also. Measurable increase availability, technology programs, addressing support, increase in student performance, pre-formative and post-assessment cycles, and then related increase in student performance, you know, on an annual level. So when you see the formative and the post-assessment, that is all the work that we're doing with the skill space. So built into all those units, skills-based instruction that our teachers are just, you know, really doing unbelievable job with, they're building in those formative and those post-assessment and summer assessment cycles. So that's the ongoing work. So this slide, I'll tell you, when, when I flip here, it looks, Brian Callen would be so proud of me, it looks so nice, but there's a delay here for some reason. But really, when you look at tier one, tier two, and tier three, tier one is what everybody receives, is a scope and sequence pacing, and that's your D cap accommodations. So that's for every student. So basically, tier one instruction, if a student is struggling in a class, then utilizing our D cap and our accommodations, what are we doing to assist that student? So there's a lot of different resources for teachers in there, but we've been focusing on this for our tier one intervention. So immediately, when a student starts to struggle in class, what accommodations are we doing for that student? And that's not through an IEP process or any of that. That's just really working with our teachers. And that's a universal system that when our students are struggling, you know, what are we doing? Tier two instruction is when a student, you're, you're getting a core plus 50% more. So this is providing more supports outside of the classroom, and it's a little more support for the student that are struggling. And then in tier three support, you can see is a lot more interventions. And so that's when we go back and you see tier one, tier two, and tier three, how the district improvement, district goals, that's what we're talking about when you see those type of interventions. Now, what's great about our strategic plan, when you look at that goal on assessments and working with all students at the same time, closing the achievement gap, and at the same time, focus on social-emotional learning, our strategic plan addresses a lot of that within that goal. And you can see the ones that I highlighted as part of that. The other piece that's going to be very helpful, and you'll see in school improvement goal three, which is our professional learning communities, is the teacher leadership. That is essential, and I think it's really taken off, it's been a very positive, it's been received very positively throughout our district. Our teachers are really excited to work with the administration. And this is, this is the same tied, the same goal, and then strategy setting, which is really about social-emotional wellbeing of all of our students. This is school improvement, professional learning communities, which is going to take all that work, and once again, individual extended leadership team, identified site-specific, job-specific steps, and that ties to their roles within the district, but it also ties in with a lot of the work that we're doing. So develop expertise on how to guide, support professional learning communities aligned to high-impact results, driven design, creating ongoing visual synopsis. And Assistant Superintendent Pick is going to explain to you like one with Paul in those data dashboards. So the teacher's going to get immediate data right away that they can utilize to, you know, for decision-making regarding student learning. And then provide comment among all staff of why and how data cycles work within the PLC. And as part of the Friday memo, I sent you an example of the work that Andy's doing at the high school, but really adopting the DuFro model on professional learning communities. I put this slide back in, but this is really a professional learning community. This is, when we talk about the DuFro model, this is what we're talking about. Some big essential questions, there's a lot more detail that goes into those data meetings, but really essential, what do, what do we really want students to learn, know, and be able to do? And that's when you're developing your power standards, your essential questions, you're tying 21st century and global learning or different learning strategies. The second piece is how will we know they really learned it? So what's the evidence? What do we develop in high, a high-level, authentic assessment, performance level descriptors, or success criteria, which we're seeing with our skills-based instruction? Our way to grade one, where first graders are identifying success criteria on a skill that they need to achieve. And then how do we generate data to analyze the learning? Your common assessments, your rubrics, your diagnostic and formative assessments, and then you identify specifics of supports and extensions. And then the two essential questions for our PLC teams is how do we respond when some students don't learn? And then I always believe that this one was probably the harder one, is how do you respond when, to those students who have already learned the material? So when you're starting a unit and they already have their prior knowledge, they already have a lot of that information, and then how are we going to respond, working with those students? So this really lends itself to that differentiation as we start to develop our lessons, which goes right back to the work of the skills-based instruction and what Billy Donigan's been working with the staff. And then, so the school improvement goal, professional learning communities, and it's just all the action steps. As I was saying earlier, the teacher leadership in this district is amazing. The teachers have stepped up at all grade levels and are really working with the administration, tackling on a lot of our challenges, but really utilizing this PLC format as we move All right. And then I hear on the school improvement, the benchmarks and the evidence of progress. And then once again, you can see all of the different benchmarks and evidence pieces that we're, we're going to be using to support this and to evaluate where we're at. Once again, going right back to the strategic plan, this was all articulated, I think, very nicely in strategic plan, and it touches within almost every strategy of the support of this goal. All right. This is district improvement goal four. So we will have a system to provide a comprehensive, rigorous, equitable, relevant curriculum that is aligned to Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. And then once again, A, we have, you know, individual extended leadership teams. And then also, in every grade level, department, and team, part of the teacher leadership and these leadership groups or for the administration are also really taking a look at curriculum. The other piece that's really nice is the work, once again, that we're doing with Billy Donigan, is really tying into this curriculum development. So it's not, it's not really an add-on, it's really inclusive of the work that we're already And then just key action steps, integrate tech-based learning opportunities, resources, provide user-friendly data, and then utilize the ship global expertise and curriculum instruction, providing draft revisions, gaps. So really, when we're looking at the curriculum, we're going to do two things. We're going to do a curriculum audit to see where we're at right now. And then we're also going to do a curriculum, an assessment audit, which ties right back to a lot of the work that we're doing with Billy Donigan. And then here are some of the benchmarks that we have. Obviously, an increase in the number of completed curriculum maps, growth in reading of the targeted curriculum maps, and then evidence aligned to Massachusetts frameworks, increase student performance through, once again, very similar, formative and post-assessment cycles, and then related increase in student performance. And not just, we're utilizing MCAS here as we're highlighting, but it's really ongoing assessments in the classroom to show student growth. And then at the, at the end here, once again, we tied our strategic plan right to this goal, and you're going to see, if you go through all of these, you'll see very common threads from the strategic plan tied directly to curriculum. And then that's my 20-minute summary. There you go. These are some of the performances that, that we had. And these two guys were the first ones on the, on the court. They baked me the, we refinished the North Basketball Court over the summer, and they said, Mr. Gal, can we see the court? I said, sure. So they're all happy. But there you go.
There were a lot of ground in 20 minutes.
I thought this was agreement.
That's it.
Greg, feedback, thoughts?
I love, I love an awful lot of it. I really do.
Yeah.
I really appreciate it, and especially the part about when we, when we talked about professional learning goal committees, initially we've been writing the strategic plan, that was going to be the driver for everything. Because if teachers are in committees, looking at student data, and thinking about how best to grow, that covers everything.
Right.
So going back and really being precise about what that model means and how to, how to do it well is huge. and how to do it well is huge.
And, you know, this summer, that was the real, I think, focus for the extended leadership team is to really dig deep and develop district goals that we felt tied to the work we're already doing and get some positive results out of it. And I think the other piece too is having teacher leadership on board now, I think, was a key factor in this development of those goals.
Part that I really liked is, I think you did a very good job of not just stating the goals, but showing us what it looked like if those goals are implemented, to have a view of really what it is that you're working towards. And I think that's been something that's been missing in our goal statements in the past. So this is wonderful detail.
And I think for us, there is some, as you know, there's some big-ticket items in there too. So it's not like next year, like, oh, well, we're going to have four new goals. I think a lot of this work, the action steps, I think, are going to be a little bit different next year, because there are going to be some things that we can accomplish right away, and there's going to be some things that are going to be ongoing. But I agree, I think it lends us to have a focus. And then what I really like in the extended leadership team is how it can trickle down right to the classroom teacher. Classroom teacher can look at those goals, look at some of those action steps, and then take some ownership too.
So, something that we haven't had the luxury to do up to this point is take a look at how we are going to be using these and measuring these goals across the year. So when it comes time to do the district evaluation at the end of the year, we have the evidence of support. And we can almost do it cut and pasting rather than having to think back. So I think one of the things that I would like to brainstorm with you, Sean, is how do we take this document and put it into a, an instrument that also collects the evidence of support as it goes on?
I agree, and I was listening to a school committee member, Hawkeizer.
School committee member Hawkeizer.
That's quite a mouthful.
A lot, S C N V.
It's like when my mother uses my middle name.
Need you to pay attention now. No, but it was, the idea was, you know, when we went through this, at the end of the year, the evaluation and the goals, I have an idea where utilizing Google Classroom for school committee, I can create different aspects where I can add evidence in throughout the year. So by the time it comes to taking a look at these goals, and then also the super intense evaluation, you'll have that evidence right along. And I think that would be helpful instead of, and then you can periodically look in there to see where we're at with some of these. But I think that might be a way of communicating throughout the year, so you're not waiting, you know, two weeks to go through a bunch of evidence.
Great job.
Sean, the things that I like about this are, it's very specific. The feedback loop is really tight. I mean, it's baked in, that we're going to look at data, data's going to, you know, impact pedagogy, pedagogy's going to impact what students are doing, generating data. So I really like that. And I, the, there's a symmetry here to me that's really useful and very elegant, that, you know, we're, this is how we're going to be working with students, and we're working with teachers in very similar ways. It's all clear, it's laid out, you know what we're looking for, and we're going to try to get there. And I really love that consistency.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we all came together and, you know, we wrapped our heads around this as leadership team, and I think we did a nice job. The other piece too, it's almost, we're asking, you know, when we do the curriculum audit, we're going to be some departments, some schools that are going to be ahead of others. And it's almost like we're differentiating within our own system of where people are at. And so we're almost taking that same PLC format as a leadership team for all of the schools. So I think it gives us clear focus this year. I think we did a lot last year, but I think we really didn't want to add like more. I think we encompassed a lot of the work we're already doing, and I think it keeps us all focused, going in the right direction.
Yeah, I would update, did you have something?
I was just going to, I mentioned it in the comments, but
Yes.
With regards to curriculum, at some point, I would like to see some conversation about enhancing that community discussion. Like this year, I think we need to start thinking about, if parents have an interest, a question, a concern, a comment, what do they do with it? Because I think, you know, I think that's one thing that I know parents feel is just, they don't know who to talk to or how to talk to, because it's not really a classroom issue.
Correct.
Like if they're asking questions about the math program, or about books or reading, or about whatever, it's a curriculum-level issue, and people don't know where to go to it. And even if they find, you know, even if they figure out who Angela is, and they get an email to you, it doesn't, it's not satisfying to a lot of people, because it doesn't feel like part of a conversation. You know, so I think that's...
Yeah, I think it's something that, you know, as we're working towards this, absolutely. You know, having a night, you know, I think someone suggested with the work that Angela's been doing, with Billy, you know, and when Billy's back in January at some point, you could do an update.
The things that have worked for us in the past, when we had the math night or the technology night, we can do something along those terms for some of the key initiatives that we have. Or maybe at each school, just on a subject basis, you know, hey, tonight it's English, tonight at the high school, parents that want to learn more about the English program and how it's put together, and how it all works together, come along.
I guess I was thinking beyond presentations.
Right.
Like some level of what a, I guess, what the school, like, site-based committee does now, where they're actually talking about making suggestions, working through ideas, that like more nearly than I'm coming to a presentation about the math program, or I'm going to look at exchange new problems.
I think it's too, it's probably too, so you have the curriculum development, which, you know, is what the educators are going to be working on, but I see what you're saying. So it's more looking at the assessment piece of, and that's where sometimes you have parent and student input on the assessment piece, and then tying into authentic assessments, also tying into place-based education. So it's like taking some of those opportunities and expanding them to tie in the curriculum to like the real world.
Whatever you want to tie it to, I'm just trying, like, I've been thinking about the group that came to talk to us about literacy and dyslexia. That was a pretty circuitous route to say, hey, I would love to be on a panel that talks about how we're teaching kids to read and write at the Breznerham. They went through the state government to come back here to do that. So like, I think we could have an easier path for parents to have true input on what they're experiencing on a daily basis coming home, and where they think we might need to strengthen, or share, or give props, or whatever it is we want to do, but...
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I mean, I think that's essentially what I know you and I did a lot with the curriculum subcommittee, was like, those were typically sometimes, you know, agenda items that we got from the community. Like, you know, homework, for instance, or like, so the dyslexia, or talking about, you know, early intervention in reading. So it would be nice to have some sort of forum, whether it be a meeting where people can come talk. It just, it would be nice to have something to, and plus, I think it gives you guys an opportunity to explain maybe why you're doing things a certain way that no one can really understand why.
I don't see this as, I mean, you need some presentation to have a level setting, but I envision this as a lot more conversation, a lot more discussion than presentation. Five minutes of presentation, 55 minutes of discussion.
As we're sort of putting together a list of the kinds of topics that we might make use of our second monthly meeting, and this is certainly one of them. Good work, Sean. I do want to add just one final thing, that it's now clear to me how stuck we got without the teacher leadership model, particularly at the high school, you know, the last three years, without having that, having the new one that we've negotiated in the contract, and having those positions filled, just drives this thing in a really wonderful way. And I'm really happy about that.
Bruce, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
So again, Sean, I thought this was awesome too. You know, most of these, or all of these are by June. So again, these are our year goals. So, you know, they're not, I mean, I wouldn't call them SMART goals, because we don't have really tied dates to a lot of these things. But I don't know if mid-year, we could get an update, just because this is a lot of stuff that we're going to say we're going to get to by the end of the year.
And we put in by June as like a target date, but some, like, the curriculum mapping district-wide is, you know...
No, it's like, again, there's so much here, and there's a lot that I know you want to do. But it might even be, you know, a good check for everybody, just say, all right, this is where we are. This is what we still need to do, and we're waiting for this, this, and this, because we can't do that without it, or those types of things.
No, I think that's a great idea, absolutely.
The next item on the agenda, I added after this for a number of reasons. We've wanted to talk about school committee goals, and what I would really like to talk about now is sort of a process. What's the process for doing that? Is there additional information we need? Do we want to use a retreat format to do that? How do we want to do this, so that we can work on it? It's an open conversation. I think we should pick the first snow day and make the retreat.
No snow.
I got cross-country skis, I'm in. I have snowshoes too, actually.
I think the challenge, and I think this deserves some thought and then discussion, is we have some very solid district goals now. How does that translate into what we do as a school committee? Because we don't want to just regurgitate those goals and say, these are the school committee goals, because for the most part, we're not doing that work. That's what we have professionals to do. And so what is our role in supporting, facilitating, and providing vision for these district goals? So I think that's a little bit about what we need to think about and discuss.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, maybe a retreat format might...
Yeah, charrette.
Might be a, you know, an additional, not like...
Whiteboards.
I love it when he speaks French.
Flip chart all over the place and...
I thought you were talking about the menu. No, I was just saying how much I love when you speak French like that.
You know, you have to be, you have to be multilingual.
Sean, do you have another level of paring down these goals to do? Like, is this, I know it's your first presentation to us. Do you have a working version of this that kind of lays out what you wanted to accomplish this year?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we do. I mean, I can, I can make that more, so I can have, you know, a year by the end of June, like, what we expect to accomplish, and then next year, and like a three-year.
Not even needing the three or four-year version, I'm just thinking, if you had a version of this year, then we can look at it and say, okay, what is it that we can?
Correct.
What role can we play in these things? Is it, we want to fund the following consultancy workshops, visitations, that sort of thing? Or do we need to look at a policy that would help you move in this direction? Do we need to, like, what is it, I mean, Nick's right, our actual work is sort of limited in scope? You know, the only other, aside from the hiring review, which is done, that, you know, the policy and the budget piece, you know, we have the, I would say, public advocacy piece, which is what we were just talking about. But other than that, like, what is it that we can do to help you?
Yeah, that's...
If you had that sort of idea of what exactly you wanted to accomplish this year, then either you could bring to us some of those ideas, or we could talk about where do we think we could play a role? And then, probably...
Or equally as important is if you come with your thoughts about what kind of support you need in these areas.
Yeah, let me, let me go back.
I think it's a two-way conversation.
No, I think it's great. I think it's...
And that's why I think that a retreat format might, or a single meeting dedicated only to that working session, roll up your sleeves, pull out the flip charts, write ideas down, small group discussions, larger group discussions, the whole batch.
I think that would probably be more popular than a retreat, to do it that way, I would assume.
And we might do it before, if we could do it like soon, then maybe with the election cycle and the restarting of any subcommittees we were going to have, we could see, we could make sure that we have any subcommittees we might need. If some needed more exploration than something else.
And also, it's a great foundation for building the budget.
Right, right. Yeah, and related to what Nick just said, building the budget, maybe finding a way through that process to identify priorities, if you will, that will drive that piece. Priorities versus... You heard some things about today about world languages and funding, you know. Maybe something to help grow.
I think I've got, yeah, I think I've got the direction, that we need to plan, plan a meeting. Use one of our school committee meetings to do this, and soon.
You want to do it not before the election? Yes, or not?
I think that...
Before Christmas break?
With enough time for you and the mayor and Sean to sit down and figure out if we would need what we might want to talk about for subcommittees.
Or the other thing is, we have that typical meeting in...
November.
Right, where we take a look at the financial position of the city. So it may be good, maybe we don't formulate those goals or priorities, if you will, at that time, but that's something that can be discussed, reminded to any conversations with the mayor, Antony Council.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's really clear, what we've made it very clear, that we expect next year to be the year when we're going to be asking for additional funding to fund some of the initiatives that are going to be driven by this, and some other things that we would like to do. So I think we've got two big-ticket items coming up in the October meeting. We have late start rollout for the community, and then the district review rollout for the community. So we could do this the first meeting in November, which I think would be just before election day, right?
It's the day before.
So why don't we tentatively set that meeting to have this conversation? It's also a good place to sort of launch the budget process, you know, so...
Do we know in the joint meeting for...
We do have that meeting somewhere.
It is in November.
I think it's in November.
Yeah, somewhere in, should be somewhere in November.
It won't be before election day.
No, you know. I think we originally hooked that at the charter, we wanted it as early in November as possible, but I think it's crept to the back.
Yeah, because the following week is Veterans Day, because it's the Monday, so I give you 18th.
It's hoping to get invited to Thanksgiving, I think, so it just keeps pushing back. All right, that sounds good, that's very helpful. Assistant Superintendent Beck has a report for us.
I'll start with the analytics platform. I sent you some of the information about the analytics platform. We've been working with a gentleman, we started working with him last year. I sent you a little bio on him, his name is Paul Manuti. And he's really developed a platform that takes advantage of the analytics component that's embedded in Google, and allows us to access that to create dashboards that would, that we can put multiple data sources in and compare them against one another. them against one another. We can look at individual students, we can look at groups of students, we can look at the school, we can look at the, at the district in our data analysis. And it's a format that I think our teachers will become easily comfortable with. It's very easy to use. There's some screenshots of what some of these dashboards look like. Over the last year, we just started building some of the dashboards for Newburyport with Paul, so we have dashboards built for MCAS, DIBELS, STAR360, and Benchmark data thus far. Benchmark data was the first data that our teachers entered on their own. It was really seamless. It, it's a very easy process for them to use. We basically just send them their, their roster, and they enter their scores, and those scores just automatically get dumped into the larger database. And so it's, it's really fun on, I think it's next week, I think we do have our, yeah, next week is the, the share, the knowledge share, which Paul runs, with the other districts who are using the platform. And Lisa Furlong and Andy Wolfe and Liz Kinsley and Emily Ruston and I will be attending that. And during that time, it's when, or with all of the other districts who have signed on with Paul, and everybody basically shares how they're using the platform to enhance their data decision process in their district. And it's a time to network and to share ideas, and Paul is so flexible and so great, he's just like a sponge at these meetings and says, want me to build a, want me to build a dashboard for that, you know? Well, we can have something that will help you with that. So we're really excited about it. That same day, Paul is going to come back to district after that knowledge share that's gonna be in Bedford. He's going to come here for our extended leadership team, and he's going to work with our extended leadership team to help them understand the platform, talk about how we're going to roll it out for our teachers this year, and take any questions or suggestions that they have, or needs that they have for the data analysis work that they want to do in their building. So, we're really excited about this. I think this is something we've been waiting for, for a very long time. You know, you can, you can invest in software programs that allow you to look at a couple different data sources together. You can, oftentimes, you've got limitations about who has access to it and who can enter the data, and how frequently the data can be, be entered. This is wide open. You own your data, Paul's there to support you in developing a system that allows you to use it pretty seamlessly.
This is gonna, this, I mean, the, the sort of, the genesis for this is to provide the teachers with a way to, to generate. Is it po, is it possible, and will, will you be pulling sort of reports off of this to get snapshots of how we're doing for all of our fourth grade classes, or how we're doing in all of our world language classes? Can you pull reports out in those different shapes, so you can see what's happening over the course of the year?
You can, you can. It's, it's really amazing. It's got the ability for you to look at things district-wide, to isolate a particular grade level, you, you can isolate down to a particular class, you can, you know, if you've got a struggling learner, you can pull in multiple data sources to say, oh, you know, I noticed this is how this child did on these in-house formative assessments, but they were really struggling on this type of assessment, but I can look at their demographics at the same time, and I can see that their attendance is, you know, is not the best, and what impact is that having on the gaps in learning? So, it's, you can sort it any way you'd like, and that's the beauty of having a consultant like Paul, because he's an email away to say, Paul, I'd like to look at this this way. Can you take care of that? And he's, absolutely, you know, and he can just set it up so that you can. It's really, I think it's pretty revolutionary, because he can make it do whatever you'd like it to do. It's really tailored to your needs, and that's, that's what he's all about, and the way we kind of buy a membership with him for a year, and he's on retainer and available to you whenever you need him to do whatever you want him to do.
Is there anybody on staff busy learning how to do all that stuff in the event we don't fund Paul or another Paul, like, if they go away?
Well, you know, I think, and Paul, Paul designed this so that you phase him out of the process. After you have built what you want to build, it's all just in your Google platform. Everything is there, and what he did was the building of it for you, so that it's ready for you to use. He really, you know, the way he's designed the whole process is that he phases out after a couple of years, and it's yours, and you take it over, and it's a tool.
And then it's probably there for, we'll pay you a one-off fee to fix something we broke, type of thing.
Right.
Export type of thing.
Right. I mean, you know, like, we'll probably, I would like to remain connected to him even after we've got everything established, so that we can be a part of the knowledge shares. There'll be, you know, there'll be something that you can be a part of, of that work, 'cause that's really exciting. He did the first one last spring, and I attended that one, and it was just, it was incredible to see, because everybody, you know, you put all those minds together in the way that people are thinking of using data and utilizing it in their buildings to inform their instructional decisions or curriculum decisions, and it's pretty exciting.
I don't know if this is what Brian was getting at, but could I just follow up on your question? I think, the question that I had is, is there gonna be somebody in-house in district who understands this well enough to make changes to it, or to add to it, or see what we're not doing? That I think it...
I, I would love to see that, so, because once the builder leaves, if, say it's you, hey, would, you know, our teacher comes, would it be a little in this, I don't know, format or whatever? That'd be great if there were somebody in central office.
That could build...
Who would be there, be like, yeah, we'll build that for you.
Right. I, I hear what you're saying. And maybe down the road...
Unless it's not legal to not do it that way and have, call them back on a freelance basis, or somebody...
Well, Judy works with us extensively with the data, and she's met with Judy Webster, who is our, our data manager for the school district, and Judy has also met with Paul. So, you know, this aspect of Google has been there for quite some time. Google has developed it more fully now, so that it works better, and I don't think as many people have delved into this, this part of Google. But eventually, Brian, yes, I think we would like to. I think the overarching answer to the question is that we want all of our administrators and teachers to be comfortable in using it from the, for, for data analysis. But you were talking about the back picture in building...
And I don't mean a specific employer, I mean, you know?
Yeah.
Angela.
Yeah.
You know?
And there may be, yeah.
It'd be, it'd be great if, if any of the staff would be able to have that scale.
It's hard to imagine with, you know, 250 staff or 300 staff.
Right.
Somebody's not gonna say, oh, this looks like a great hobby, I love this stuff, I just love this stuff.
Is the data ever avail, will ever be available, like, anonymized to anybody? Like, we go to DESI to look at some of the stuff, but is this format of it, will that, is that ever intended to be published? But without teacher and student names and all the others?
Right.
We could probably pull reports and standardize...
You could definitely pull the MCAS reports and the growth...
Because just from the way it's laid out, it's way easier to read than DESI's.
Yes.
So, I would think that the public would be really interested in, hey, here's the district.
Exactly.
That's a great question. Well, I'm sorry. That's a, that's a great question, Brian, I'm gonna bring that up next week, because right now, every time that I use what we've got so far, you know, student names are attached, and, you know, it, it's not anonymous in any way, because it's designed to break things down to that level. But I'm sure there could be a filter put on that, where you can see...
These screenshots don't have any names.
Well, some of the stuff's blocked with white boxes and stuff.
Right, right.
Right, I guess that's true.
I would imagine that any of the data can be anonymized, just like a false, if one is...
Right, right. That's a good question.
Am I saying that correctly, anonymized?
It sounds cool, I don't know.
I know.
Yeah, I, I'll live with it.
We knew what you meant.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe what we, what we do on a regular basis is pull, identify what reports would be helpful for the community to see, and pull them and post them, so that they're, they're attached, you know?
Well, you know, and it's real information, so the Globe will do a thing saying, you know, mass schools ranked, Dover Sherborn's always number one, right? But that's not information, you know, that's just somebody crawling about the numbers they're at. So it'd be cool to be able to see this and say, look, how great Newburyport's doing, and this is why, rather than just a, a number in the list, so...
And are we gonna put things in, like, attendance rates, for example, we were talking a lot about, or GPAs, to match them against...
You can, working with Paul and...
Standardized measures?
Yeah.
We can put anything we'd like in there.
I know we can, but are we planning on...
Well, we're, you know, I think one of the things Paul warned us against was going too big, too fast. He said, you know, he had some districts that everybody just got so enthusiastic about the possibilities of it, that they added so much data that their dashboards didn't make any sense. So, he really recommends that you start, you start with several data sources that you use frequently, get comfortable with the dashboard, learn to use it well, then decide what other data is gonna be valuable, so you don't overwhelm your staff as you're training them, you don't overwhelm yourselves with developing dashboards that have so much data in them that, that they're really hard to read.
Yeah.
So, I think...
I only wrote that, like, we were talking last year about, I guess throughout this year, looking at the impact of attendance on achievement. And so if we had attendance in here measured against MCAS and GPA and SAT and all those sorts of things, does it, doesn't matter?
No, I agree. I think...
I think we could have almost like a wishlist, okay, you, you have these 10 things now, right? And then, okay, by 2021, we're all gonna, we're gonna add in ABC.
Right.
Just so you don't forget about it, too.
Yeah.
'Cause I know if I'm designing something and I've, you have this kind of, oh, we should do that, and then six months later, I'm not finished, I've forgotten about it, I'm almost like, gonna...
Sort of keeping that, keeping that running, keeping that running list, but I also expect as we begin to use it, with that, in turn, it'll stimulate ideas about new ways we can...
Just because you have a dashboard doesn't mean that you don't begin to develop versions of the dashboard that look at different combinations of data. So that, you know, you might, you might have one dashboard that's pulling in MCAS and DESI and DIBELS, and then you have another one that's just taking a look at DIBELS alone with attendance, for example.
Exactly.
And then, so, that, the, the important thing is that you've got the data, that you capture the data, and that you've got tools that allow you to pull it into a dashboard format, and you can cut and paste. And that's where I fully think that, that having somebody beyond Paul in district to help us do those permutations of the, of the, of the dashboards would be very, very valuable for us in district.
I, I, I agree. You know, this allows us to do our own data warehousing, basically, and then decide how you want to express it with the various dashboards, so...
And, and I think for, for us and working with Assistant Superintendent Beck, we wanna, 'cause we're really talking about PLC and analyzing data, we want teacher-friendly, so, you know, the data dashboard that we're looking to develop immediately is what's gonna help the classroom teacher impact the instruction.
And the way, the way this is structured is really taking something that's quite complex and the leading edge in technology, which is text and data mining. And, you know, putting it, putting, putting a, a skin on it that anybody can use.
Correct.
That's true.
It's great work.
I have a question. So, so the, the technology itself, it's free, it's just Google, that we weren't using before. So does he have like an initial, I mean, I'd kind of like, I'm just curious, what his, what his membership costs for a year, and I guess you renew it every year, but...
Yeah, it's, um, this year, for us to have the open-ended membership and his availability and the, and then knowledge shares and whatnot was $7,500.
Wow. That seems very inexpensive.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I know, I know companies that do this, so I mean, this is out there, and it's, it's pretty expensive.
Mr. Kennedy, please don't say what, don't...
And I think...
Just don't, you can just pass that one by.
Want me to edit that?
Yeah.
Only to edit the tape, too, I think.
I, I think, um, I think really with this, one of the things, one of Paul's objectives is he wanted to make it affordable, because he wanted to teach educators. This stemmed out of him having a conversation, he's always worked in the world of finance, building databases, secure databases for them, and he has a friend who's a superintendent, and they got talking about data one day, and his friend said, boy, I really wish I could see data this way. I wish that we could use data this way in the school. And Paul said, you can, I'll show you how. And kind of played the, you know, worked one up for his friend and showed it to him, and his friend said, oh my gosh, you know, schools would die for this, because we don't have tools like this at our access. And so Paul started small, he just started working that way. It was really word of mouth, that's how I heard of him, was word of mouth. I had a friend who had used him in another district, told me about it, and I thought, oh, I want to meet him. Met him, and then we have a curriculum group on the North Shore, and everybody was like, I, we all want to meet him. And, you know, it just kind of, it took off. So, I don't think, you know, when he started, that he, he started it as his primary business or anything, and you realize there was a need in the world of education for this kind of work, and that people were paying software companies to develop these kind of things that had real limitations on them, and charging a lot of money. So, you know, I don't know where he'll go in the future, I don't know if he has goals to go further into the education market or not, but for now, he's very affordable. And last year, we didn't even spend that, we didn't get that kind of membership. Last year, I paid him as I needed him, and he had just a fee that was very reasonable.
So year two could be a different cost, or is it...
It depends on what, this is the first year he did the year-long membership that would give you some of the benefits. You know, the knowledge shares, the, the access at any time. He's unbelievably accessible, too. If I send him an email in the morning, I usually have the changes that day or early the next day. So, he just, I think it's kind of second nature to him, so you send him, and he gets in there, and he does what he needs to do, and, so, he's, it is so ingrained in the way that he thinks, that he makes it simple for you, too. You know? So, you know when someone's really good at that, when they can make it seem so easy.
All right.
So, and then the other thing I was going to tell you about tonight was some of the summer curriculum writing. We had talked, I said that I would give you more of a highlight of that. That's how I've been spending a lot of my time this last week, because I finally had a chance to really delve into these projects that the teachers were working on this summer, and there is so much good work that was done during summer curriculum writing this year. We had a total of 73 summer curriculum writing projects underway this summer, and 100 and, I think, 20, 125 teachers were involved in that work. So, it was really substantial, truly a dedication by our teachers. I think it helped that we had a little bit longer summer. I also think the fact that we tag teamed some of the summer curriculum writing to the skills-based work that we were doing. When we started Cohort Two workshops this summer, we also made it a two-part program, so that you could start, you could get the work started in the three-day workshop, and you could continue the work with some curriculum writing as the summer went on. So, the, the work is great, it gave us a great jumping off point for leveling up, you know, some of the language that we use in skills-based, even for our teachers. So as they started to develop some of the curriculum, and they, they got to a certain point, then I was able to make recommendations that would allow them to level up as they continue the work throughout the year. One of the goals that Superintendent Gallagher talked about was getting back to some curriculum mapping, and he and I have discussed the best approach to that, you know, to, as you know, any of you who sat on the committee over the years knew that we spent years doing year-long maps in the district, and we moved away from mapping for some time as we built the new strategic plan, and we started looking at some of the bigger picture conceptual changes that we wanted to put in place as far as our instructional practices. So as we think about how we want to map now, we want them to be authentic, and we want them to be real for the teachers in a way that makes the most sense. So, on the heels of all the summer curriculum work... So, um, on the heels of all the summer curriculum work, I've asked teachers to really focus on, um, the backwards design model in building unit maps around the units they're building for skills-based. And so we're going to continue that approach as we move into the school year, as, as teachers continue to build new skills-based, um, units, we'll develop unit maps that way. I, we really don't wanna lose momentum in the work that teachers are doing, we want the mapping work to make sense and to be useful and to truly be fluid the way a map should be. So, um, that's a component of this, and, um, the majority of these projects are accompanied by the beginning of their maps, so.
Are teachers currently, like, tracking how they're developing, like, when the teachers are working the standards-based methods now, are they saying, like, okay, I'm taking the standard I wanna get to, and I'm hitting it here and here and here so that, like, next year, they have that, that vision laid out, and they can then maybe share that with, like, is that part of the work that Billy's helping them do?
Yes. It, it all starts, it starts, the foundation of it is identifying the power standards within what they're going to teach.
I'm just talking about recording it, you're talking about mapping it, so.
Yes, and that's the method we're gonna use to record it, so. That's where we're at, but it's, it's really, it's very impressive, and, um, it's really, it's, it's been a pleasure to dive into these projects and see where the teachers are going and the level of thinking that's happening, and the various levels that they're at in their evolution of, uh, learning how to build skills-based units of study with their students.
Superintendent's report. So I just wanted to touch base on opening of school, um, that first week, as I said, with the teachers back and having, um, all the students here that we recognize, and once again, appreciate all the high school students for their time. I think we had a great opening of school, I had an opportunity to go to almost every classroom and see every teacher, I rode the bus twice, um, I rode it on Thursday, and when I was out visiting classrooms, some of the students who I was a bus buddy with, um, one of the other students heard me, and I say, oh yeah, I rode the bus, and he's like, can you ride my bus tomorrow? And I said, sure, I would love to. So I got to ride the bus twice this year, which is great. Um, you know, I'll tell you, it really puts a, when I'm on the bus, you get it from the bus driver's sense of learning the routes. We had some, I, I think we managed, uh, like, all the construction that was going on, uh, throughout the city, uh, on Merrimack Street, Lowell Street, sidewalks, uh, I can't say enough for Marshal Murray and the Police Department, they had a, a lot of, I think, presence out there for the first week of school, looking at all the different, uh, walkways, and, um, I think they were very, very helpful, um, you know, as we're working on the Breslin that dismissal that first week, which is really important, make sure all of our, uh, you know, the elementary students are on the right bus. Um, so they took some extra time, uh, you know, to get everybody squared away, so, but right now, I think we're, we're in a good place with transportation, knock on wood. And, uh, so the opening of school was, it was wonderful, uh, the teachers were great to be back, uh, the students were excited, um, to be back. And then our theme, as you all know, is win the day, which is, you know, just concentrate one day at a time, um, and not worry down the road, but if we can give a hundred percent, you know, each day, then our short-term goals and long-term goals will be accomplished. So the teachers wore their win-the-day shirts with a lot of pride, um, and they've been wearing them on Fridays, and, and so last year, we had a T-shirt that was team, together, everyone achieves more, this year is win the day, and I said, if I can get to five days, you'll, I'll have a wardrobe from Monday to Friday. Five years, five years, that's my goal.
They call it a working perk.
That's right.
Coming T-shirts.
Right, well, it's a uniform allotment.
That's right. Um, but it's a lot of enthusiasm, and I'm just, you know, once again, really excited to start the school year. We, we did a lot of work in the summer in preparation, I credit the extended leadership team, um, and the principals for all their preparation, and then, you know, we accomplished, you know, the district goals was, was a lot of work, um, and I give credit to our district leaders and everybody working together on that, so I think we're in a good place. I wanted to give a update on, um, uh, where I, where we are with the late start work that we've been doing. Um, from the summer, from our summer retreat, we started to gather a draft of the guidelines, and then the school committee voted on the guidelines, uh, which has been very helpful from the summer and throughout, um, to guide the work. I just wanted to, you know, as part of my entry plan, I've met with a lot of the late start, um, parents individually, I've met with, you know, a lot of the different stakeholders, and so what I've done is I've gathered all the work that this community has done until late start, uh, and looked at, uh, a lot of the feedback. So I know there was, like, three major sticking points, one of them was transportation, um, and going back to the guidelines, really taking a look at transportation and trying to make that cost-neutral. Uh, I had a meeting, uh, over the summer with our, uh, busing from the previous year, and then we took the busing students for this year, and then I had another meeting with Lee and Nancy, um, as we developed our plan to make sure the plan that we're looking at is still cost-neutral, and it is, we can utilize the same, uh, amount of buses to transport all of our students, so that, that was a big hurdle. I think the second piece, uh, feedback from the Breslinian parents and staff, um, so the plan that we started to develop is not to, uh, impact their arrival and dismissal times, um, so as we're developing that plan, I think that that's another big piece, um, that we accomplished with the plan that we're in development of. And then the other piece is looking at athletics. Um, a lot of feedback, uh, in years past on athletics and impacting after-school programming, and I think the plan that's in development right now, um, addresses those issues, where athletics and after-school programming, uh, won't be, uh, impacted in a way that would disrupt what's currently happening, so. Um, so that's kind of the big ticket we're at, we're looking at, uh, looking to revise and modify, uh, Mullen, Knoc, and High School, uh, start dismissal times, um, and I wanna go back and do a few more checks and balances with that. I've been working also, um, with the principals, and then also, um, ran it by the union on kind of where we're at, um, and I really wanna communicate with the faculty, I sent out, uh, to the faculty, the school committee's guidelines on this work, and they were very appreciative of that communication, and they were appreciative of, uh, the work that you guys have all done regarding the guidelines. Um, and then I wanna keep our, um, school community, uh, engaged in the next step. So for, for us, what, what I think I'd like to do is go back, start looking at the times now, I think we accomplished a lot thus far in addressing, you know, some of those big-ticket items, um, taking a look at the times, going back to the principals and the administration, um, develop the plan that I'd like to present October seventh, um, and also, uh, present that to the faculty at, uh, before we presented publicly down the road, um, to keep everyone in the loop. So I would have, like, volunteer faculty meetings after school, um, of the schools that it would impact, um, and kind of what, what we're looking at to get some feedback. Um, but I think we're in a, in a, a good place, uh, to have that, uh, first look at a plan on October seventh, uh, for the school committee, and then from that process, I would probably have a couple of community nights where, uh, the community and the parents could come, come and, uh, do a presentation for them, same, same presentation, and then get input to see, uh, to see where we're at with the ultimate goal of trying to have this ready for a vote in November, once we vet, uh, some of the problems. But I think to present the plan, um, we really wanna take a look at some of those bigger-ticket items, athletics, the Breslinian community, and transportation, and I think the plan we have in development is, um, addresses those issues in a positive way. And that's where we're at.
Questions, feedback?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll see, oh, we'll see. We'll see October seventh.
Let's do a presentation.
Yeah, I work for applause.
Have you had any opportunity to, uh, interface or speak with any other superintendents in the KPN League?
Yes, yes, so athletic directors, um, would support, I mean, if there is a modification, if it gets voted in, um, uh, any type of modifications to the athletic schedules after school. Um, and the modifications we're looking for would not have a drastic impact on, on athletics or after-school programming, because there are other programs that go on after school.
I would also think that, uh, relative for, because I know, for instance, I'm just using this example, not looking to pick on or single out, but I know your cross-country program is quite large this year.
Yes.
Over a hundred and thirty kids, and, uh, I'm just, you know, obviously, it's not gonna be an issue this year, but, uh, with later start times, uh, might, I mean, there, it, one could reasonably assume that that may affect cer- certain exam schedules for kids, say they have to leave early for a meet, and then how those makeup exams are gonna be.
Yeah.
Administered. My, my, uh, my own kids, when they did sports in college, used to, you know, that, that was kind of a big deal, but, you know, I, it's just something that I think there has to be willingness to provide those and, you know, make sure that, uh, students don't lose any, uh, academic.
Correct.
Academics, period, as, as they will.
Right, and I think, you know, that, you heard all that feedback, too, um, you know, that we wouldn't have mass exodus of student athletes having to leave early to go, uh, you know, I, I think we'd be comfortable with keeping, you know, uh, the same schedule and they, they wouldn't have to leave early. So, we, when I present it, we get your feedback and we'll go from there.
Great. Um, subcommittee reports, we, we put it out, joint ed last, all right?
Yeah.
Uh, finance meets tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, yeah, eight fifteen.
Policy.
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
Yeah. Policy met, uh, this evening, uh, we're diving into, uh, a very interesting policy on the use of, uh, electronic communication from the district to, um, to community and how it is used and what it is used for. Um, basically aimed at defining where and how it can be used to support organizations that are not part of the school district but are still, uh, very much, uh, important to our students. Uh, things like the, uh, new youth services, or it could be scouting, it could be any number of things, so we, we're beginning to take a look at that. Uh, made some good progress today, and, uh, we will follow up with that at our next meeting October twenty-first. Uh, we also took a look at the fact that, uh, we have a policy on the books that require the superintendent to deliver an annual report, uh, every year, and, uh, we would like to recommend and make a motion that we accept the superintendent's entry report for the annual report for this year, um, because it basically does everything that the annual report is supposed to do. Let me read the description from the policy directly. Uh, "An annual report covering the diversified activities of the school system and the administration's recommendation for their improvement will be prepared by the superintendent and presented to the school committee, ideally to provide context for our annual budget. Upon committee approval, the report will be made available to the public and used as one of the means for, uh, informing parents, guardians, citizens, and others of the programs and conditions of the city's public schools." So I think, can you hear that description, it pretty much describes what the superintendent already presented to us. Um, so I think for this year, it would be, it behooves to accept the, uh, superintendent's entry report as the annual report.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion about that?
So the report, so the annual report is basically for the year, what, what's the duration of the time? What's the time that this report comes?
The timeline, the annual report needs to be prepared in such a way that it prepares us for the budget for next year.
Okay, so, since it says annual report, would it be effective upon the superintendent's first day in the district, which would, it was, uh, July first, two thousand and eighteen? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So would that be effectively July first, two thousand and eighteen, until when?
Until June thirtieth of this year, so.
Okay.
That, that basically takes the school year.
Okay.
Shouldn't it have dates in that motion?
They could have them.
Yeah, I'd, I'd amend the motion with those dates.
July first.
Two thousand and eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Um, you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Accept that amendment?
So let me just read, accept the superintendent's entry report, SSN, you wrote the report, dated July first, two thousand and eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
Are we still on discussion?
Sure, yeah, we're in discussion.
Great. Um, based on what we talked about earlier tonight, meaning that as Sean obviously did, like, an entry thing for the year in last meeting or the meeting before, and now he's gonna work up goals that we can prepare for the budget, does it make sense to ask for that at the beginning of the school, each school year, instead of something kind of vague, like an annual report, and the way the dates make it sound as if we're gonna get something at the beginning of July? So, uh, we can have the dates, but it just seems to say that we should ask for some sort of beginning of the school year presentation, this is the state of the school, this is what we're intending to work on, with the intentions of launching the next year's budget season going into the November, uh, you know what I'm saying, it's just.
Yeah, no, to get a presentation of an annual report at our first September meeting, is, I guess what you're saying.
Yes, and then follow it up with goals that will lead to budget discussions or something.
We can make that change to the, uh, to the policy and bring it back next, at, at our next, uh, policy committee meeting.
Great. Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Great, before we adjourn, just a heads up on the next couple of meetings, um, on October seventh, we're gonna get the presentation of the late start initiative. One thing we didn't do at this committee, uh, meeting tonight is vote on the superintendent's contract, which we will need to do, the raise, we'll do that at the next meeting publicly. Uh, on October twenty-first, we're gonna get a, a presentation on the district review, and at our first meeting in November, uh, we're gonna have a conversation about school committee goals. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.